Wednesday, April 6, 2016, Town Council meeting. We begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). First off, welcome to the new Town Council, Cal Bowden.
Thank you.
Welcome to this motley crew.
(inaudible).
I look forward to working with you. Last year, we did, or last week, last meeting, we did not, we postponed the election of officers because one of the councilors was not present, so we will have that now. So I will accept nominations, nominations? Is that the right word? Nominations for Chair.
Just before we go that, when we vote, I'm gonna do like we did in the past and ask each council if there's more than one nominee to state their preference, and the council with the most votes that way will become Chair instead of having a motion of second.
Counsel Thompson.
I will vote to nominate Gary Levy.
Do we need a second?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Weinstein.
I just wanted to say that as the council, I think that we've had a good year, and we've started to tackle some big issues. As we've done that, I think that the Chair has really set the tone for conversation and has, it's been steady, and there's been a level of professionalism that I have appreciated. So with that, I nominate Phil Nazaro.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Pike.
No need.
Any other nominations? So you want preference?
Yeah, so I'm gonna go around the room and just, you can state the last name of the candidate you prefer.
The last name?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel Burns.
Counsel Nazaro.
Counsel Bowden.
Counsel Nazaro.
Counsel Pike.
Counsel Levy.
Counsel Thompson.
Counsel Weinstein.
Counsel Nazaro.
Counsel Levy.
Levy.
Counsel Nazaro.
Counsel Levy. Counsel Levy wins. You are now the Chair, Mr. Levy. Would you like to come sit here? Keep the seats?
You can just do that tonight.
You can sit at seat right now.
But he's, you know, the...
It's on you now.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair? Any? Counsel Thompson?
I would like to nominate Dale Pike for Vice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel Burns?
I'd like to nominate Counsel Nazaro.
Do I have a second?
Second. Jump in.
Am I the first person now?
The Chair is the last person.
All right. I'm not the Chair.
No.
No, no. Should it go, well, actually, it would go with...
It goes that way after Weinstein.
So Phil should vote before me, most probably.
Right, exactly.
Okay. I'll let you call the rule.
Same thing. Counsel Burns?
Counsel Nazaro.
Counsel Bowden?
Counsel Nazaro.
Counsel Pike?
Counsel Pike.
Counsel Thompson?
Counsel, Counsel Pike.
Counsel Weinstein?
Nazaro.
Counsel Nazaro.
I didn't expect this, but I'll say Nazaro.
Counsel Levy?
Okay, so it's three to three?
Correct.
Is that what it is?
No, it's four to two.
Oh. Okay, so it's four to two.
Nazaro.
Okay, so, based on that, I guess Counsel Nazaro?
Hey.
It's over. By the way, I didn't say anything at the time, but I'd like to thank Phil for his professionalism this year, and I think the council is working very well together, and I certainly hope to continue with discussion and an open meeting as we've had the last, I think, few years. So, thank you very much, Phil.
Thank you.
For your time. That being said, do I have a motion to adopt the Town Council rules for 2016-17?
So moved.
Does anybody have questioned?
A second?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Does anyone have questions, concerns, any changes that have come up? Now, just, just so I'm clear, Steve, we're gonna vote on all the positions now, that's one of the changes we made last year.
That's correct.
Okay, so everybody's aware of that, and we're gonna do that...
Right after this.
Okay. So, if there's nothing else, call the roll, please.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Bowden?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
So, should we start off, I don't have the, I apologize, I haven't the list, because I didn't know.
Actually, it's right there. Sheet of paper to your right.
Oh, great. So, just going in order, if that's, we don't have to go with Budget Committee or Planning anymore, because it really doesn't matter. Okay. So we have the McKelland Dam Committee, and currently serving is Counsel Pike, and that was his request. So, do we, are we gonna go around and vote on every one of these, Steve? Is that, is that the new deal?
Actually, it does say the council appoints, so.
Okay.
Do you need a motion of a second for...
For each one?
If we don't have, if we don't have an issue, just for sake of asking, it's not that I mind, but if, if everybody's okay with it, can we just, unless there's a concern, can we just go with it?
I think you can do it by consensus, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I think that might save some time. Do we have a consensus on Counsel Pike serving on the McKelland? Is anyone fast and furious wanting to be on that committee other than Counsel Pike?
I think Dale has, Counsel Pike has done an excellent job on the McKelland Dam Committee, and probably understands it more than anyone else.
I agree.[399.24][399.24](laughing).
So we're unanimous on that? Okay. And highway safety, we have, in the past, just for the record, Larry Pickering, or Counsel Pickering, and Counsel Nazaro, or Vice Chair Nazaro.
Sorry.
Amy Thompson has her name in. Is there a consensus that now will be appropriate for everyone? Good. Next is Budget Committee. We should probably vote on budget and planning, just because it's always sort of been that way. Budget Committee, excuse me, last year was Counsel Thompson, and Counsel Weinstein was an alternate. This year, Counsel Weinstein wants her name, and, but there is no alternate, so we're gonna have to make that, oh, did you wanna do that?
I can, I'm just thinking about it. An alternate, I could probably do scheduling if that is an alternate, yeah, I could.
Okay, so we'll put that in. Okay, do we have a consensus on Counsel?
Actually, that one, you need, we'll need a vote.
Yeah, we'll vote around. Do I have a motion to accept Counsel Weinstein for Budget Committee?
So moved.
Do I have a...
Second.
Yep.
Do you want to do a friendly amendment to include Counsel Thompson as the alternate? So do one motion, one vote? Okay.
Do we have to officially say that?
No, that's...
Or is it a, friendly amendment to that? Okay. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Bowden?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, we have the cable franchise renegotiations that's been going on now for two years, that, I guess my name's been there, but there's been no cable renegotiations, so...
We are starting this year.
I'll stay on it.
Yeah.
If anybody wants to take it, it's theirs, but it's, it's basically, when they come in and, you know, all I want is closed captioning and some on-demand, that would be, that would make me happy, with a few extra bucks from them, but that's me. Does anybody else want that? Just so we're clear. So we have a consensus on that? Okay. And CIP Committee, last year, it was Counsel Weinstein, Kyle Bowden has his name in. Is there a consensus on...
And Counsel Nazaro?
I put my name in, but given that I'm now somewhat unexpectedly Vice Chair, I will, I will defer to Kyle, or to Counsel Bowden.
Okay. Do we have a consensus on that? Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a great committee.
Conservation Commission, last year, it was Counselor Burns. I don't see a request, so...
No, I wanted to try something else this year.
I, I see. Well, based on that, is there anyone else that's interested in conservation?
Let's, let me propose that, we'll see how it goes. I mean, I'm, I, you know, I'm already on the Dam Committee. I'm on a subcommittee with the, with the Planning Board, and, you know, they were, some were hinting that they'd hope I'd stay on, but I'm fine with Counselor Burns being on the Planning Committee instead. I don't know if, I'm fine if people wanna vote on that one, I really, you know, I'm, I'm fine however it works out, but if I'm not on the Planning Committee, I wouldn't mind being on the Conservation Committee, but if I'm on the Planning Committee, I'd rather not be on the Conservation Committee. So, if you wanna switch the order and do Planning Board next, that could determine what...
Okay. Do you have a preference?
Well, I just feel like I'm in the middle of some, you know, I'm on a subcommittee with the Planning Board, so, you know, but I'm not trying to hog the committees either, so, it's, I, I...
Okay, so what, you wanna just call the roll on the plan, do you wanna do the...
Just a quick, statutorily, you don't need to have a member on the Conservation Commission. It's, it's more of a liaison position between the two bodies, but...
They do, they do expend, they do expend some money here and there, don't they?
They do, yep.
And there were, there was a lot of, you know, turtle talking and stuff like that.
Turtle science.
Science, yeah.
Switch it back up.
Switch it back up.
Spring is here.
So, tell you what, why don't we hold off on that and go to Planning, and then we'll do EDC and get back to Conservation, how's that sound? So, do I have a motion, just for the record, Dale Pike, Counsel Pike has been on the Planning Board, and I, as he said, I think they're in the middle of a few things right now, so, I've been the alternate, and we have Counselor Pike, Burns, and I was putting my name in as an alternate, 'cause I didn't know what was going on, so... So, does someone wanna make a motion for Counsel Pike, and then for Burns, and then go around? I mean, I think that's...
Kind of question.
Yeah.
Sorry, should I ask you a question? I mean, if we already have two people that are going for the primary, should it just, should they be the primary and alternate?
Yeah.
Like, whoever comes in second becomes the alternate?
I think that's fine, 'cause I was gonna remove my name.
Yeah, before, we had like no, we only had one person who wanted to do it last year.
Yeah. That's fine, I mean, that would make sense. Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so, do we, we still need to make a motion, correct? Do I have a motion for Counsel Pike?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I have a motion for Counsel Burns?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Question? Do you have a, you look...
A second.[771.62][771.62](laughing). I didn't know if there was a...
I'll do the same as for Chair and Vice Chair, state your preference as we go around. Counsel Burns?
Counsel Burns?
Counsel Bowden?
Counsel Burns.
Counsel Pike?
Counsel Pike.
Counsel Thompson?
Pike.
Counsel Weinstein?
Counsel Burns.
Counsel Nazaro?
With all due respect to Counsel Pike, Counsel Burns.
Counsel Levy?
And, and, and this is nothing against Counsel Burns, not that I have to qualify her, but I think since they aren't in, in the middle of so many things, I think it would be appropriate to, to have Counsel Pike continuing the planning.
Counsel Burns is the full member, Counsel Pike is the alternate.
And, jumping back to, well, we can do EDC. So I had my name in for EDC, I've been on it for the last two and a half, three years, and Counsel Burns wants, wants it as well. I don't have a prob, yeah, I don't have a problem.
Do we need two?
There's two seats.
There's only one seat now.
Well, you, you used to have two, just for the record, I wanted to continue with two, but that's okay. While we're talking about EDC, just briefly, Steve, did we, did we cut the committee back to seven and actually choose the seven members?
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I wasn't sure that we actually voted, are you absolutely positive on that?
Yes.
'Cause I remember we changed...
Yes, 'cause there was vacancies, you eliminated some of the seats.
No, I know we, I know we voted to go from, what was it, eleven to seven?
Yes.
But I don't remember the seven members, just for the record, I don't remember.
I don't have it in front of me, but yes, we did.
Okay.
She voted on some.
Yeah.
Well, based on that, if Counsel, if Counselor Burns wants to be on the EDC, I would, you know, we're coming to the, the only reason I really wanted to be on it was because we're coming to the head. That was the only committee I was gonna be on, but if that is your choice, I would be happy to defer.
Honestly, I had it down as like either/or, so, you know, I gave a couple of choices there for committees when I sent in my preferences, so...
Can we have a, can we have a alternate?
Yep, if the council wants one, yeah.
And, and if we have an alternate, because as, when I was the alternate on Planning last year, you know, I was allowed to go to the meetings and discuss certain things, particularly when they were doing the, because a lot of it had to do with the EDC when they were rewriting the master plan. If Counsel Burns was the alternate, 'cause there's no big votes coming up now, I think now we're just into, into information, and then we're gonna meet with the Planning Board. If, if Counsel Burns is an alternate, you can come to the meetings and participate.
Right, sure.
So...
That's fine.
It's fine, you know, I could go either way, if you're satisfied with that, if we have a consensus, is that okay with everybody? Okay. You got that, Steve?
Yep.
And now we're back to Conservation. Does anybody wanna...
So, I'm not on a committee right now, I'm not sure that's the right committee for me, just frankly. Like, it's nothing against Conservation, I just, I'm like, I'm not sure my skillset lies within it.
You gotta beef with Conservation.
I really don't have a beef with Conservation.
Scratch and grow.
You know, when you see a turtle crossing the street, you take that...
You could put me on, I'll, I'll be on Conservation.
Where do they meet, Steve? Is it once a month, or once every, is it once a month?
Once a month, by Thursdays, yeah, it's like the, is it the first or second Thursday of the month?
Second.
What's not in here is that I'm the Chair of the Veterans Memorial Trust, which is the reason that I held back a bit.
Right. I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Did we, when I was looking at this, do we have an alternate for the highway safety?
No.
No. We usually didn't have this many alternates, but I...
Right. I just thought I saw that somewhere, okay.
Yeah, please.
That came up because the counselor at the time, like, said he wasn't sure he was gonna be able to make the meetings, so there was an alternate put in.
Okay.
And actually, this year, with the Benet Way project coming on and whatnot, it's gonna actually, I think, meet, 'cause they never used to meet very often, I think that was one of the...
It meets on as needed basis.
Wasn't it highway safety, yeah?
Yeah, it's, if there's a, if there's an issue, right, if there's a review of a stop sign or a speed limit, the Highway Safety Committee meets and reviews the plans, so...
Yeah, but they'll probably be involved when we get, when the Benet Way thing gets going right a little bit, won't they be brought up to speed on, no?
No, that goes right to the council, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's more review.
The engineering, it might make sense.
Like, the last time they met when I was on it, was when they wanted to change the direction of Church Street, which might have been before you.
It was before me.
Yeah.
My god, that's five years ago.
Yeah, we met last year to discuss parking, and that was a brief discussion, so that was it.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna, we don't have to get into it now, but it might not be a bad idea when, when they do get into the engineering for the sidewalk, maybe just to keep abreast, so they can, you know, otherwise, they won't have any meetings, you know. And just in finality on this, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Administrator, but if you're a alternate, you can obviously go to the meetings and participate, was my understanding, but you can't vote necessarily.
Right.
Correct, okay. Everybody good with these decisions? Any questions? Next on the agenda, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? It's seven nineteen and a half. Seeing none, I will close public comment at seven nineteen and forty-five seconds. We have on the agenda Anthony and, I guess it's Andrea or Andrea Sellers, a discussion on a proposed promotional event at Ninety Main Street. Would you like to give an overview?
Sure. We had a request to have a temporary food sales via food truck at Ninety Main Street in the area of Goodfellow Tattoo Club. It's a barbecue, and it's going to be for one day, it's sort of a small block party kind of situation. We reviewed the ordinance, and while it says that a vendor permit's required for selling items on town sidewalks, this is a one-time situation, we reviewed the vendor ordinance, and it said, and our, the Chief of Police and I felt that that is a situation to say, if you're gonna have a hot dog stand throughout the summer on the sidewalk, you'd have to come into the council and receive a vendor permit, where this is a one-time situation, the Chief of Police can shut down a parking space and let them do that. So there's no action needed by the council, the chief has already approved it, and, but the, the letter was addressed to the council, so we wanted to make sure that the council knew.
And is this gonna be a one-time thing, or is it...
It is.
Okay.
If they, if they wanna, if somebody wanted to continue it, then they have to come and get a license from the council.
Okay. Any questions, or...
Are we invited?
Sure.[1238.62][1238.62](laughing).
Do we need to vote on this, Steve?
Nope.
Or is it pro forma done?
Yep.
Okay. There's no public hearing, do I have a motion for minutes to accept the 2016 March, excuse me, March sixteen, 2016 regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Any questions, changes?
Second.
Oh, geez, I'm, it's been a little while. Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel Pike. Any changes, questions? I didn't have any myself, so, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Bowden?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
That should be an abstention, 'cause he wasn't present.
No, minutes are not, you are allowed to vote on minutes even if you're not present, there's been a law, that somebody actually reviewed, practices you can abstain, but you're allowed to vote on them, as long as you believe that's a record of what you was there, there's no...
When did that pass?
It's not, there was a, somebody brought it up to a court saying that they didn't have the right to, and I can't remember what town, they said, no, they have a right to vote on it, as long as it, they believe it is, so there's no error in voting on it.
That's logical.
Well, you said typical practices we abstain.
Right.
Well, can you do that on non-public as well, I suppose?
Yes.
That would be pretty amazing, since there is no record that they would be able to watch, but that's okay. Do I have a motion to accept March sixteen, non-public minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Pickin' Amy. A second.
Amy, Amy. Any changes, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Bowden?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Report of the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item I report is, earlier this year, we solicited proposals to do a complete overhaul and renovation to the two bathrooms in the lower level of this building. This would have included construction of family disabled bathroom and additional storage space. The proposals came in too high, with the lowest at $191,000, so it needs to say we didn't do it that way. But we did need to upgrade the facility, since some of the plumbing was not working, tiles were coming up off the floor, and some of the sheet rock was just getting out of date. So we determined at that point to replace sheet rock, upgrade the plumbing, and replace the tile and hardware, and it could be mainly done in-house with minimal outside contractors. At that point, we estimated it could done under the spending limit that I have of $10,000. However, with any old building, when the sheet rock was removed, we found that it was in worse condition than we believed. Plumbing was leaking, electrical wires were out of date and not secured to anything, it was the old cloth wires back there, and sheet rock was attached to the stone foundation with no insulation. It was determined that it was necessary to fix these issues while the walls were open, since it would just be a matter of time before something failed and we had a larger issue on our hands. I approved this, the work, since it was timed, it was of the essence. On the agenda today is a resolution to withdraw up to $33,000 for the building improvement capital reserve funds to cover these repairs. There's no need to suspend the rules and act on it this evening. If the council does not approve it, then we'll have the finding in our operating budget to do these repairs. I can tell you when I went down there, when it was ripped out, it was literally just sheet rock, stone, and you could feel the wind coming through, so we did insulate that part. The pipes were leaking behind the walls, so it was needed to get in there and do it, so we have facilities on the lower level.
Any questions while we're on this?
Actually, yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
I wasn't sure to bring, if I should bring this up now, or when we read the resolution, but would it be possible to get a list of any other projects that we have that's gonna, that will come out of that fund?
Absolutely, yep.
Like, in the, you know, whether it's six months or a year?
Yep, we can get you that.
Thank you.
Seeing no more, go ahead, please.
The next item is, we received our actual rates for health insurance for fiscal year seventeen. We prepared the budget, we use a guaranteed maximum rate that our healthcare provider[1503.91] We use a guaranteed maximum rate that our healthcare provider gives us. That rate this year was 6%. The health trust has since set the actual rates. I'm happy to say that our rates were only increasing .4% over the previous year. This will result in a savings of $30,212 from what was budgeted. Please be aware that this number is an estimate. Employee changes can impact this figure in the, before June 30th of fiscal year 17, 2017. The finance director and I are currently reviewing our plans and looking to offer additional plans to comply with the Affordable Care Act. We'll have proposals before the town council in the coming months, and we'll discuss the situation also with our collective bargaining agreement unit, because they'll have to agree to any changes as well. As many councils know, we're in the process of conducting our first citizen survey. As of Monday, we've been pleasantly surprised. We've had 379 respondents with a completion rate of 76%. What that means is sometimes people just don't complete all the questions and they drop off, or the first question is, are you a resident of Newmarket? And if you say no, you get kicked out. But we actually were surprised also with the completion rate of 76%. The electric survey, electronic survey is available at, on town website from April 1st through May 1st, and we'll present the results to the town council in the late spring. Hard copies, for those who may want to fill it up that way, are available at the town clerk tax collector's office or in my office, and we just turn it back in and we'll enter them in for the data as well. I want to let the council know that we are working on a project with my counterparts in Stratum, Exeter, and Durham, that we've applied for a master's student fellow through the municipal manager's association in New Hampshire. It's the intention of the four communities to use this student to study areas in which the communities can or cannot share your services and how to implement them. This individual worked part-time for five months in our communities. Funding is a 50/50 match between the MMA and H in the communities. If successful, it would be about $500 for Newmarket. If the project goes past five months, we'd have the option to continue, but would have to pay the individual through the four communities, which we've already discussed and we've agreed to, if need be, we would do that. And I'll keep the council posted on our efforts if we get award, awarded that. Next item is not on my written report, but I did want to let the council know that we will be ending the trial period of issuing monthly water and sewer bills in return to quarterly billing. Water and sewer customers will receive monthly bill in April and May, and then we'll begin receiving quarterly bills starting in August of 2016. You'll see, they'll receive quarterly bills in August, November, February, and May. The reason, as you know, for issuing the bills was to provide customers with smaller bills and make it easier for them to pay. This would be in line with other service bills such as cable, electricity, and telephone that homeowners pay. We did see an increase in payments, but we received a number of ejections I have having to pay monthly. As such, we'll be returning to quarterly payments. However, in order to address the significant amount of money that is currently past due, the town will also, has also changed its past due collection policy. In the past, town police leans on properties that had a bill of more than 15 days past due, over $50. While the town may still lean a property, it'll be rare, and the town will now shut off service to those who do not pay their bills as is the main means of enforcement. Residents and property owners will receive notices 14 days prior to shut off. The ordinance is online of the procedure, and if there's any other questions, they can contact the Newmarket Water and Sewer Department. And I have sad news that I have to announce the passing of Ms. Evelyn Lebranche, the recent recipient of the Newmarket Boston Post cane. Ms. Lebranche passed away March 5th at the age of 102. She was honored last June as the oldest resident in Newmarket, and we are searching right now for the, a new recipient of the Boston Post cane. And that's all, I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My condolences to the council. Are there any questions for the administrator? Seeing none, I have just one, Steve. Last year, the insurance, they told us it was gonna be a 6% increase, right? So they came in at basically 40 basis points, right? So that $30,000, I think I know the answer, I just want to make sure, that's still fungible within the budget, correct? Or does that come out?
No, that stays in the budget, correct.
So if you need, if you wanted to take that money, would it just be taken, or would the council know, or how would that work?
If we were to transfer the funds to another department, the council has to approve any transfers between departments.
Okay, so it stays where, not to cut it, but it stays where it is?
Correct.
Until you may need it, or bathroom problems, or things like that?
Right, at the end of the year. The big thing is, that number for healthcare fluctuates because of the census that we take. You may have an individual when we start the budget who is receiving a one, a single plan, but by the end of the next fiscal year, may be married with a child, so you have to now find the money in the budget for a family plan. So while we're saying it's a $30,000 savings, usually we see a change in the census that that may be eaten up.
But the 6% was predicated on what we have now, correct?
Correct, that's, the, since the health trust knows that municipalities do their budgets in the fall, they come up with an estimate by looking at the figures that they have before they go to their actuaries and come back with the numbers, because they want to have more numbers to do it later in the year. So they had a 6% figure. They come, they've set the rate in March when they have more accurate figures, and that's where it came up to the .4% increase.
My last question, just on this, do they do it on, on the actual experience at the town level, or do they do it just based on all municipalities?
Both. We're in...
For example, if Newmarket had not one visit to the doctor, would it by definition drop?
Not necessarily, because it's also what happens in the pool.
That's why I'm saying, is it, it's based on?
Both.
Okay.
Our experience and the experience of the pool. Perfect example was a few years back during the H1N1 scare. Rates went up because of the fact that everybody was using it. It may not have been Newmarket using it, but other people in the pool were using, because they said if you have symptoms, go to the emergency room. So that spiked the healthcare cost that year, so you didn't see a drop in the rates. But that, it doesn't necessarily mean that we had a lot of people going.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report to tell us about? Counselor Thompson?
Well, unfortunately, Budget Committee did meet last Monday. Unfortunately, I couldn't go. So my report is a whole bunch of, not much to find. I couldn't find that it was online. I did try to, did you find, okay.
Yeah, I watched it.
Yeah, I tried it again today, and I couldn't, I couldn't find it. So my apologies, the basic big thing is that Dave Fols was re-elected as chair, and Dan Smith will be vice chair as Mickey Burns stepped down, or chose not to run, or whatever happened. So my apologies that I don't have more than that. Maybe, maybe Amy wants to, was there something else that needed to get reported?
It was a pretty quick meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was, a lot of what they did was the chair and vice chair, and Mickey chose not to, not to run as one of those spots, so.
Yeah, and hearing things and watching that, I mean, it was really just organization, so, but Dave Fols is continuing as chair, which is great. That's it.
Any other committee? Well, we didn't meet, just for the record, but I'm bringing this up because I did receive for the, for the Economic Development Committee, I received the master plan rewrite, you know, or the, excuse me, the draft of the new rewrite. And I don't presume, did you get, did you get that, Counsel Burns? So maybe Steve can have a hard copy made, because I don't think you want to print the whole thing off. It shows the whole zone, so to speak, and then it goes over the proposed changes that came from the consultants, Quas and John Connery. It's a pretty quick read, and I thought it basically captured what we were told by the consultants, but I think you might find that worthwhile.
Great, thank you.
And, and hopefully, I think we might be meeting within the next 45 days or so after I spoke to the administrator, and maybe we can set up a joint meeting or something to review that, so. That's it, no other committee reports. Onto all business, do I have a motion to accept Resolution 2015-16-36 to purchase a new Ford?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Go ahead.
Counsel Nazaro, second. Is Rick want to give a review, or how do you want to do it, Steve?
Sure.
Usually, tell us about the truck.
Rick?
Rick. Won't pass inspection. I can almost do a little of this, you know? But I'm full.
Yeah, we had to park it after the snowstorm. Technically, you have 10 days to put your sticker on, but we did park it. The problem is, it takes about 10 months to a year to get the new one, by the time they order the chassis, and then they build the body and stuff. But, so we're trying to come up with an inexpensive way to at least keep it on the road, but right now, it is off the road. It's, typically, we were replacing this vehicle back in the day every 10 years, and then we went to 12, and obviously, it's an O2, so we're, we're at 14. But we have two 1 tons, we used to have three, now we just have the two. It is used for plowing and sanding, it has its own plow route. We're gonna utilize the sander that's with the current vehicle. We would just replace the vehicle in the plow, the front plow, and keep the current sander. It would just be piped for the one, so we won't be buying a new sander with it. We kind of rehabbed the one we have, and it has a stainless tub in it, so we just had to put a new chain and spin a motor in it, and we kind of auto excellence rebuilt it, so that saved us a lot of money, because they're, they're about $10,000. But it is a primary piece of equipment in the fleet utilized year-round by the department, and we really do need it, but...
Just procedurally, the purchasing ordinance for the town allows to, that if we receive the state bid price, that you don't need to receive three quotes, because the state does the bidding for us, so that's why there's only one on this one.
And I also always shop around just to see, and you can never touch it. It's always a great number. I always do try to see, and nobody could come close to the state bid numbers for the vehicles, so.
So it's, one's $44,000, and then 27 is?
Yeah, we buy the chassis from a Ford dealership, and then we get the body from another company, and then they mount it on the truck with the plow.
Okay. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I apologize. Counsel Pike, and then Thompson.
Yeah, I think the only question I have is, I mean, it seems clear that the, the truck is needed. There's a significant amount of main repairs in the last, last year or two, so I think the question is, if you were looking forward, do you think in the future you need to go back to a more frequent cycle, or do you think the vehicles will last longer in the future? It's, you know, I just was sort of looking retroactively at that 12 grand.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, which, there's another resolution tonight that kind of comes up, and that follows that. We probably should go back to just replacing it at 12, because you try to get more out of it, and it just, it doesn't work out at the end, you know? By the time, it's, there's a reason we were doing those things, and I think it was a good practice, to be totally honest. You know, we went from the 10 to 12, and I think that's, that's reasonable, but to try to go past that, that you're really, especially in like this type of a vehicle, it starts to hit you pretty hard, so. It breaks down a lot, and it's hard to keep it on the road, and so forth, so.
Counsel Thompson?
That must have been from before. So I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions? I was just gonna ask very briefly, the truck, obviously, the body is failed, not the engine per se, right, Rick?
I'm sorry?
Is it mostly the body? I mean, it says here the vehicle will need a lot of repairs, bodywork, et cetera. Is the engine in pretty good shape?
The engine for a diesel is in pretty good shape, but then springs, there's some oil leaks, whether to separate that and replace the seals, that's a bit, you almost have to pull the motor. It's a big expensive job.
The only reason I asked is because it seems like a lot of our vehicles have low mileage, but they rust out, just because of 10, 12 years old, and they're out, you know, doing what they do. And I didn't know if there was any value in the motors, because 70,000 on a diesel is not a lot of miles. Is there any value in that in the secondary market? That's, that was kind of my question. I mean, I mean, it probably would run another 100,000 miles easy, wouldn't it?
Well, if you made some kind of truck, but like the frames, like you'd have to put a new frame under the truck to do that, it'd be cheaper for someone to pay $1,000 for the motor and plop it in another, another chassis.
That's what I meant, to just sell the motor.
To clarify, they're not accepting this as a trade-in, correct?
No.
So we'll be selling this as surplus property as soon as the new vehicle comes in, so we'll try to get some money from it that way.
It just seemed to me that the motors usually are okay. It's, I mean, they may need, you know, gaskets and whatnot, but the vehicles would fall apart from the, from all the salt, so. Seeing no other questions, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Can I have a motion to accept Resolution 2015-16-37 regarding a Ford F-550 4x4 Type 1 ambulance?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was the fire chief to discuss this one?
I'll let him, I'll let him continue. I think we can put that engine in the ambulance, then. Bounce on down the road.
So I'll just kind of spin off of Dale's comment, I mean, Counselor Pike's comment. The ambulances, we faithfully replaced them at 10 years, so at nine years, I would have came to you, because it takes a year for them to build them, basically. You don't see it for, they tell you 10 months, but it's always a year. They lie, but anyway. Yeah, so we used to do that, so I was like, oh, we'll get a couple more, let's try to go 12 years. Well, it's been towed from the hospital twice back to Newmarket, which is...
All done.
As long as it wasn't towed to them.
We did get the patient there, we got the patient there to the hospital, we just didn't dare drive it home. It's been out of service a lot. Of course, every time it's out of service, that's when you get the dual call, can't cover the second call, you're losing revenues. There's a reason we were going 10 years, and then you'll see the maintenance costs also. And I know the mileage is down, and what we do do with the ambulances is we alternate them every week. We go primary to secondary, so we don't keep one ambulance always being first due. So it helps, it helps where we have to keep the mileage down a little bit, but they idle, they run all the time, we overload them with all kinds of equipment, and it's the idling more so than anything. This ambulance has been eating turbos like, you know, I eat a cupcake, but they...
Killing it, Rick.
Those are an expensive line item, but...
You're on a roll tonight.
I am, huh?
On a cupcake.
But, no, but so we, there's no state bid here, so we went out and we got proposals. We got three cheap ones, and the one thing was, the radios is a separate line item from a different company that is state bid. The ambulance radios, we've been turning them over from the old to the new. This, the ones that's in there now is almost 20 years old, no more buying parts, so we're putting into update the radios with this purchase also through two-way communications, state bid. But the ambulance, this ambulance, we're going up to a 550, our others were 450s, and basically, what happens is with these, when you put all your equipment on them and everything, they're basically already overloaded for what they're rated for. And so that's gonna get away from this. This is more of a truck type instead of the van type. It'll have the nose like a pickup on the front of it. Same size, everyone will be able to drive it the same, but it's a little ruggeder, and it's also four-wheel drive, so it'll get around better in the snow versus the vans. They're not the greatest in the snow. But this comes out of the ambulance revolving fund also, so it's from all the revenues. We took this out of the CIP years ago. This will be our second ambulance we're purchasing, I believe, through this process. But it'll deplete the fund down to about $26,000 in July, 45 will go in. We won't really be writing a check for this until it comes in, which is gonna be basically a year from now. So we're gonna be looking at this ambulance for like another year. It's out of service quite frequently, and we should keep them for 10 years, and at the ninth year, I should be coming up here and giving the speech instead of trying to hang on to it, because there's nothing more embarrassing than having a tow truck back up to the ER to grab.
Counsel Weinstein, but I, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to clarify the, the funding of it. The, the town set up the ambulance revolving fund, that all revenues from ambulance calls goes into this fund, and the purpose is exactly this, to purchase ambulances and equipment. Yes, it's gonna deplete it, however, by the time we need to replace the other ambulance, it'll be replenished, and you'll deplete it again. There'll be enough funds in there to, any, if the emergency comes up to do some work. This is different from, you'll have the fire, we'll discuss, discussing later, the fire capital improvement fund. That is through tax dollars. So this is just purely from the revenues from ambulance calls.
Counsel Weinstein?
I have a couple of questions. So we have two ambulances.
We do.
Total. How old is the other one?
It's an O9.
Okay.
It's an O9.
And then, and that's in decent shape?
Yep, yep.
And what are we gonna do? What are you gonna do for the next year with this other ambulance?
Well, we're actually, what we've been doing is making the O9 more primary than this one. We haven't been alternating quite as frequently, because it's typically, a lot of times, it's out of service, but it's, it's not a huge dollar amount thing, but it's out of service. And what happens when that happens, and we get, we're extremely busy, the fire department is out of control right now since the first of the year. We typically do like 80 calls, you'll see in my reports if you look back. We do like 80 to 86 calls a month. This past month, I think we did 122. I mean, it's just, not just a couple more, it's, it's really, really extremely busy. So we're gonna have to stop alternating till we get the new one. You know, we're still, we'll still do it when we have faith, but the faith for this one is, it's just not reliable. A lot of little things, but when it's an ambulance, you have to take it out of service, unfortunately. And then when you get the dual call, you can't cover your calls, so now you're losing revenues, because you can't, someone else is picking up your medical call. And as you know, the ambulance does very well on the revenue side, so.
But you feel like you can limp along for the next year?
Yeah, we're, we're...
Not that we have a choice.
We've altered our operations to make it work, but the O9's gonna be more primary right now, and this is gonna be more backup, because it's not reliable.
Thanks, Rick.
Counsel Nazaro, and then Thompson.
Just a couple of quick things. Obviously, well, not obviously, but I am supportive of this. One is the time factor, just, I mean, when, we only have one ambulance, then we have to go to mutual aid to another community to come to our community, correct?
Yep.
So you have two things going on at once. Now we're waiting for something to come from Durham, or somewhere near else.
And we do still respond with crews, and we have some equipment.
Yep.
We just can't do the transport.
Can't transport. And there's the revenue, so there's the, like, concern for the community side, and there's the revenue side around the fact that this is making money, right? This is, the money you're making from the ambulance is paying for this.
Yeah.
Which is amazing. And I think the final part of it is, I actually had the opportunity to go see this ambulance, and I would highly encourage that the council pass this. I think it is well overdue. Thanks. Thanks.
Good. Counselor Thompson?
I just wanted to say I wholeheartedly support this. That is why funds are in capital reserve funds, regardless of whether it comes from taxpayer funds or from the ambulance revenue. That's what we have the money here for. So I know there's been a concern about, oh, we're depleting it, but that's why it's there. And this needs to get spent, and if there's anything that you can do, I trust that you will, as far as seeing if you can get it even faster.
Yeah, I've been, I didn't want to do that before I had your blessing, but that, that is a, that is a...
Right, no, I'm sure you'll be on that, so I have no problem with that. That's exactly why the funds are there, and that's what we need in the community, so...
And what we're putting in there is working out great, the forty-five, basically, because the way the rotation works, and we can only buy specific items, I can't buy fire gear, it's just the ambulance or medical stuff, like the life packs and the AEDs and stuff in the ambulances and the stretchers. It's working out, we're able to sustain, we might deplete it down to twenty-five, thirty thousand, but we still have a little cushion, and we're not, you know, we don't need to continue to add more funds to it. Upping the forty-five is what I mean by that statement. So I appreciate the support, and like I said, I wasn't trying to be irresponsible, I was trying to push it out a little, and it was, and then it just, and it happened, like when it happened, it happened.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Just trying to do the right thing, and it's probably, ten years is the right thing to do. I guess is what I'm telling you.
Well said.
Yes.
Just one, everybody else, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Pike.
Well, the only question I had is looking again, not so much about this purchase, but the next one. You have a 2009 now, so the next two ambulance purchases, if you did, if you purchased one, are you thinking 2019 or 2020 for the next?
It would be, it would be 2020.
Okay.
Essentially. I would come in and ask.
In nineteen.
In nineteen, because it, like I said, they tell you ten months, but it's a year. Realistically, it's...
You expect the funds to be there at that time? Okay, that's really all the question is. So it's going to be like a six-to-four-year type of thing like that?
Type of, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Rick, just a question on the trade. The one we're buying was not with the trade-in, or was it?
Yeah, the guy...
They lowballed you on the trade, so you went, you went with the other company, correct?
We'll sell, someone will make it a parts truck or...
So do you, that was my question, do you have any idea what you think you'll get out of this ambulance, and if you're going to really get...
Realistically, I feel like we should get ten thousand dollars for the vehicle if we sell it. Like, even if we do sealed bids, say, minimum bid, boom, put it on display down there, people can come look at it, instead of sending it to the auction, because at the auction, sometimes they all work together.
Well, I was going to say, if you're going to get lowballed, is there any benefit to having the parts? Just a question. I don't know, I'm just asking.
I'd rather it be someone else's headache.
Okay.
I'm honest with you.
Because they, you know, three grand, you know?
Yeah. But we'll get, I'm telling you, we should get ten grand for it. You know what I mean? Maybe even more, I'm just saying, we should do a minimum bid.
I was just looking what they offered you, which was three.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's crazy.
And then the other thing is, if, you know, when you're going to get a new one, I think it's fine, I think you should come in, you know, in 2019, 20, whatever it is. And at that point, it would make sense to evaluate, you know, obviously, the condition it's in, because for all you know, maybe it'll get you more life, you don't know. So, I mean, it makes sense to come in every ten years, but obviously, it would make sense to know what kind of conditions the ambulance is in or any vehicle, for that matter, so that was my two cents. By the way, these also do other towns, is that accurate?
We, we do.
Now, is there a priority for Newmarket over other towns? How do you jockey that? In other words, you know, if you get a call, if you have an ambulance that's sort of limping along, you know, because now you're kind of down to one, and one that obviously needs repair, and do you, is there any kind of prioritization for that, or do you just go by calls?
If it's in service, it goes on a call. Someone requests it, it goes on a call.
Are the rates commensurate between a Newmarket call and an out-of-town call? Is it done by mileage, time, how's that?
It's all, the nice thing about that, when we go mutual aid for medicals, if someone doesn't pay, that community pays. So it's a guaranteed revenue versus the potential for maybe a write-off, per se.
Okay. But my question was, are the rates the same charge, whether it's...
Yeah, the rate's the same, you know, the mileage might be a little more.
Okay, so that's what I, that's what I meant, is it based on time and mileage?
It's, everything's based on mileage and a set fee based on the type of call, whether it's ALS call, BLS call, there's different rates.
Okay.
The mileage would be key.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nizarro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
And we have a resolution to have a motion to accept 2015-16-38 relating to a lease purchase of twenty-four Scott earpaks. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You want to do the earpaks, Mr.?
Yes, so on the earpaks...
Pickup truck, now on the earpaks.
Fire chief, so...
Yep. I don't have to change my hat, no.
You're going to have to get like multiple uniforms to come around, like, come down a back, back pole.
Go change my shirt, come back in. So we, we've had them in the CIP now for a couple of years, we knew this was kind of coming. The earpaks have to be flow-tested every year, and you can only do that so many times, and then they say, that's it, yeah, no more, no good. In 2013, NFPA, which is like the bible for fire service as far as when we keep our gear and when we have to get rid of it, earpaks, they made some changes to the earpaks. There were three key changes. The low air alarm used to ring at twenty-five percent, and now it's thirty-three percent. The mask, they had to change the integrity because they were melting on people, so they're much more, less likely to melt to your face in a fire.
That's nice.
In effect, you're sealed. The other thing was the pass alarms are all the same, and when we talk in them, in the older ones, when you try to talk on the radio, it's all jibber-jabber, it's, you basically don't know what someone's trying to tell you. The new ones now, it muffles out all that, the nozzle spray noise and the bang and clang, and so you can hear what someone's trying to tell you inside the building. So there's this new rule that went into effect in 2013. Pretty much everyone around us has updated their earpaks. We're one of the last. Greenland's in the process, just like we are, of updating theirs right now. Newfields has, Durham has, Portsmouth has, Exeter has. I don't believe Stratum's done it yet, I tried to check with him, and he didn't call me back, but there's a new standard as far as what your earpack has to do, and those were the key elements that I just spoke to. Our packs don't meet that. In May of seventeen, our packs, we can't put them on our backs anymore, it's, they're done. So nothing's going to change budget-wise between now and then. We'll put another fifty, I think, into the capital reserve. So we purchased the ones we have now in '02, we did a lease purchase, five-year lease purchase, because they're expensive. And that's what we're proposing to do again, so we don't deplete the CIP account. The interest rates are pretty low, and it's pretty much what all the communities have been doing, because they're so expensive. You typically get about fifteen years out of your earpaks, typically. They always make a change at some point, but these were really big changes, the low air, also the regulators, when you look at it, they used to be up here, you put a mask on you, so there's, there's a lot of safety concerns as to why they did that. The other thing that's changed is we have twenty earpaks. Every riding seat now has to have an earpack, even the driver of the apparatus. That was something back in the day that wasn't a requirement. So now, even the pump operator has to have a pack. He might not be going inside, but he has to have an earpack. So we have to go from twenty to twenty-four packs to meet that regulation. So essentially, it takes a little time for these to come in too, probably less than six months is what they're telling me. But everyone's updating because of this 2013 rule change, so it may take a little bit longer. We're okay until May of seventeen with ours, but we definitely can't go beyond that. So I would like to do it now, just because everyone's trying to update, and I don't want to be, uh-oh, now we're in trouble, like, kind of what could potentially happen. So that's why this is kind of coming up now, because the rule change, and to make sure we get them in time, and we're not, because in seventeen, we cannot put them on, there's no, you can, you keep them six extra months, you can't, they will not float test them. And that's an annual test that has to be done, but you can only do it so many times. And then they don't, they just don't let you do it. Everything with firefighting has an expiration date eventually, they just, that's how it, how it rolls, so...
Counselor Thompson?
A couple of questions. We own these at the end, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's a lease to own, or in a matter, like, like a car loan or something like that, we're financing it, right? Why do we, I guess that maybe answers the own question, why do we lease versus buy outright? And let me tie into that, because it may fall into, we do have a really good interest rate of 2.79, I get that, but versus paying cash for them, how much do we earn in the town accounts for interest, and what's the, what's the delta, Steve?
We're not getting 2.79, it's minimal right now for our interest on the capital reserve funds.
Nothing.
Well, and that to me, sorry, I'm going to interrupt again, that to me would say, okay, look, if we were earning more interest in that, then I would finance, but if we're not earning much on interest in the town accounts, why are we paying 2.79?
And the reason is, we, this is a fund where we do need to keep money in there for, if a, we had a catastrophic failure of the fire truck, this is where we'd go to, to fix it. I do not feel comfortable withdrawing and depleting it by withdrawing the entire 213-940 to replace them, and I requested that the fire chief look for leasing, and the finance director look for leasing options.
And it's great rate, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I completely understand, and I don't, I would prefer not to either, but with this fund and the situation we're in, I would, I have to recommend that we lease them, so we don't deplete the capital reserve fund. One problem with a pump, a hose pump on a fire truck or an engine, that could be in the hundred thousand dollar range.
And something that we could not finance at all?
I'm sorry, what do you mean by finance?
If that were to happen, could we get financing at that point?
Usually not.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Pike?
Yeah, there's a related question, but it just, I noticed there was a three-year there, is, is it the same thing, you're just more comfortable with the five than the three, or?
Yeah, the difference is, the total cost at the end of five is going to be 232,000, and the end of three is 225,000. So there's a little savings by going to three, it's just, it's, as we said, it's a much larger number for the withdrawal, but what we're replenishing it with annually, we have been, it's more palatable to do the smaller amount.
Is that okay? Counselor Pike, did that hit you where you wanted to go?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's just, I guess it's a fact of where we are, because I think if you look across our accounts, we have lots of balances that are sort of rotating without a lot, and yet we have something here where we could save quite a bit. I guess that's just because the, you know, it's, it's not that easy to transfer money around your accounts, but it seems unfortunate that we have to carry so much surplus when we, when there's no interest rate to speak of on those amounts, and this is...
And it's twenty grand more.
Pretty soon they might be charging.
Yeah. I had a related question. So, because maybe I missed it, but what would we be paying if it was cash? What's...
Two thirteen, nine forty.
Okay, so with the interest, we're paying how much more?
The two thirty, I'm sorry.
About twenty.
It's twenty grand?
About that.
Yeah, two thirty-two.
So, because it was bugging me as well, you know, is there any, maybe you can't take it from another fund, I get that, but you could, if we had something, as you said, catastrophic, you'd still be left with roughly a hundred grand, give or take, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is it something that, I mean, I just hate taking twenty thousand dollars and paying it for a five-year lease, if we absolutely don't need it. Is, you know, could you find that money in the general fund or something else? I mean, are you really, I mean, if you're that concerned?
Yeah.
And could we shorten it to the three at least?
If the council wants to shorten to three, that's doable. I mean, we have that money.
Because then you could plan for that a little better.
Yeah.
What's that going to say? I didn't do all the math, what's that going to say?
It's 225,000 for the three-year, so it's about seven.
You know, it takes seven grand. I mean, if that, and it doesn't put pressure on, on you, because we could plan at that point, because it would go into another budget season, right? Does the council feel comfortable with that, or?
I think we'd find the money if we needed it. We're, we're, we're funding conservatively overall across the budget, we're not, it's not like we're trying to stretch things, so I think in this case, it's, it seems a shame where it's going to cost us eight to twenty grand that we can't do something.
It's kind of making me a little, you know, not sick enough to need an ambulance, but kind of bumming me out.
Procedurally, procedurally, can I request that a motion be made to amend this resolution to a three-year lease payment with a 2.74% interest rate with annual payment and withdrawal from the capital reserve fund of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-one cents?
You in a formal motion, please, amendment?
Yeah.
I...
So moved.
Second.
You may want to get that too.
Yeah, we will.
Okay. So now it's a three-year instead of a five, we saved seven grand, so that's something.
Yeah.
And I think we're all fairly comfortable.
Just before I board on it, you and Rick are totally confident with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd be able to deal with it in the next budget cycle if something came up, in any case.
What I'll do is I'll make sure we budget minimally for the contribution to the capital reserve fund, the lease payment, so there'll always be something going into the...
Which is an increase of fifty thousand, twenty-five, we're putting there right now.
Correct.
Is everybody okay with this?
We just got to remember that come budget season.
Yep.
I'll remind you.
This is on the amendment.
Yeah. Please call the roll on the amendment to three, from five to three.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nizarro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Now, do you have to call the roll on the resolution? Okay, good.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nizarro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Well, we saved something, so it's not a bad... Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Very welcome.
Thanks, Rick.
And seeing no old, I don't think there's any more old business, there's no third readings, we will go into new business, so bear with me, and I will get there. Okay.
I'll help you out, I'll propose a motion for...
Yeah, you want to do that for Rochelle?
Rochelle Sharples, the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee, for a three-year term to expire March 2019.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Just, I'll say, just because I'm chair of that committee, that she's, she's been secretary secretary and treasurer for years now, and does just a great job at it, very committed to our veterans.
She is very committed, absolutely.
To the veterans.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Absolutely.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And resolutions in the first reading, we have, I believe, two. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixteen dash thirty-nine, the purchase of a Ford Police